The meeting is adjourned, and so now we will begin our city council study session. We again excuse Mr. Glover, who is traveling today. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to review the items on the agenda for our Monday, June the 4th, regular council meeting. Council, please refer to that document. The first several items are actions from the judicial advisory board and liquor license Item five is taking action on various purchasing contracts. Six is taking action on the various resolutions. Seven is receiving public comment on ordinances. Eight is a subdivision plat. Currently, the items that are not on the consent agenda is to conduct a public hearing to extend the locally controlled alternative expenditure limitation. That's home rule. So we just need to have a public hearing, is that right, Mr. Smith? And we'll get a staff presentation, I'm sure, in the next couple of months on home rule.
Well, actually, we'll be prepared to make a presentation on Monday.
On Monday, okay. Are we going to do that in our, in our study session or in the council meeting?
Mayor, it's up to you. I think it might be helpful to do it for the public to understand the impacts of what would happen if it's not approved.
Yeah. And I guess there's not a huge difference whether we do it in study session or upstairs, I guess.
Yeah, I just thought maybe it'd be helpful if the broadcast, it doesn't matter either way, but maybe broadcasting upstairs. We're ready to do it either way, Mayor. We have a short presentation.
Since we have to do it in our public meeting upstairs anyway, we must, that's where we ought to do it.
That's what I was thinking.
That makes sense. Okay. The next item not on the consent agenda is a zoning case, Hawes Road and Baseline Road. I think we'll be, this is the one that's tied to the garage issue that we're discussing in just a few minutes. And then agreements with Arizona State University is off the consent agenda. Any, council, any questions or concerns or changes you want to make to that?
No.
Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda for this meeting, then, is to hear a presentation in right direction on garage size. Now, we do have a standing room only crowd here, and I'm going to guess that the bulk of folks that are here wishing to participate in this meeting are going to be on agenda item 2D. So does anyone object to us going, skipping to 2D just so we can accommodate the crowd and allow them to perhaps file out and then people will have places to sit?
Mayor, that would be fine. 2C is kind of related to 2D, and that was anticipating that presentation feeds into 2D, if you want to think about it.
Right. So you think it's important that we hear 2C before we deliberate on 2D?
It's part of 2D. It's part of one of the projects listed, but it could go either way.
Right. And I think we might, so that's the IDEA museum. Sunny, are you here and ready to go? And I think we might have told some of your board members they don't need to worry that it's a long meeting, they can come late.
No, they're here.
They're here? Okay, great. All right, well, then if there's no objection, let's go ahead and skip over A and B. We'll come back to them, and we'll begin with 2C to be followed by 2D. Welcome, Sunny.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing would be is pulling up the right PowerPoint. Will someone do that?
Yeah, we might have thrown our tech people for a loop by doing this.
Or me. Thank you, Carrie. Mayor and council, thank you very much for having me here, and I am proud and honored to present our work over the last year. And we have several members of the staff and the board and honorary board members and supporters with me, and I want to thank you for moving it from last week. I'm a lot better than I was, but I do have my handy Kleenex and my water, just in case. So, as you know, the, one moment, please. As you know, the IDEA museum started its journey as the Children's Fine Arts Center 40 years ago. We're really proud to say that we're 40 years old. And it began with Jack and John Whiteman, and the focus was always on the arts. And we became the IDEA museum in 2014 after a long journey of focus groups with the community and also support through the Virginia G. Piper Charitable Trust. So our mission today is that the IDEA museum inspires children of all ages to experience their world differently through art exhibitions and activities designed to support early learning, nurture creative thinking, and engage families. And with that, I wanted to let you know that, I live in Mesa, by the way, in District 6, so I love Mesa and am very proud and honored to be head of the museum and moved here 12 and a half, half years ago because I felt that this museum is a gem across the country and have been to many museums. We are a public-private partnership for those of, those of you who are listening and here in attendance don't know that. We are a city museum, but we have, 40% of our support comes from the IDEA museum board, wonderful volunteers who dedicate their time, energy, and resources to creating the museum as it is. We've received numerous awards, including recently the Arizona Forward Award for our work with the recyclery, with the Department of Environmental Management Sustainability. We have 100,000 visitors a year that come to the museum, and we have a $2.1 million combined budget with the city and the board, and we have no debt, and we have a little bit in working reserve, so we're really proud of that hard work that we've done over the years. I want to share with you a quote about our early learning that is very important to individuals who visit the museum. We have, one moment, please. We have Beth Eva E. Cole, who's three, and her twin brother Ben, who've been visiting the museum since they were babies. They most recently started attending the museum's new early childhood learning program, Artville Academy, and their mother Sarah says they are more interested in reading and creating after attending that program. Quote, "The IDEA museum is a safe place and a happy place that allows my children to grow and develop right in front of me. It's a special place for our family." In the area of nurture and creative thinking, Kimberly, age eight, who's a second grader here in Mesa, attended Build It: Architecture and Design on a Title I school field trip. She saw a model of a bridge on view, which inspired her to want to be a bridge builder when she grows up. In the area of engaging families, Becca Jennings, who also lives in Mesa, states, "The museum has given them a family culture and an identity. The distractions at home are removed when you come here and are in your child's space. You are able to be creative with your children. The IDEA museum provides a space for families to discover culture, art, and have meaningful time together for generations." So with that, I'm presenting to you the site master plan, which we have wanted to do for some time because, as many of you know, we are in a, we renovated grocery store, and that is a very old structure. So Virginia G. Piper Charitable Trust, who's been a supporter since we had Artville, has, which was birthed 15 years ago, has supported us all along the way. And most recently, we're proud that we're part of a project called Agile, which is with Dr. Susan Kenny-Stevens, who's nationally known in supporting nonprofits to be more sustainable. So even though we're a nonprofit, we really do believe we're a business, and we want to definitely be in the black and not in the red. And so therefore, they supported us with 100, with $375,000 project, which is looking at many things, our governance structure, our business model, and so forth. But within that was a master site plan, which is 100,000 support from them, and then another 25,000, which was pro bono from Gyroscope Incorporated, who is the firm that we were able to work with, who we worked with, with the Hub Gallery, and they are an amazing, amazing firm who, they are based in California, and they actually are nationally known, and they work with a variety of museums for strategic planning, master site planning, exhibition design, and focus groups and other support areas. We do not believe in just being, of course, inclusive within ourselves. We believe it's very important to go out in the community and get the community support and ideas and understanding of where we need to go in the future. So we conducted many focus groups, and you can see some of the quotes from those individuals. And it was a one-year staff and board project. It was not just a staff run or board run. And what did we hear? We heard, "Make it better, not bigger." And that was good news to us because what that means is instead of just demolishing the building, we're actually looking at the building and how we can utilize it better and actually saving money by not building new. So as you know, if you've been to the museum, if you have a four-year-old and you have an eight-year-old, you have to immediately make a decision of whether you go right to Artville or you go left to the Hub Gallery in the Whiteman Family Exhibition Gallery. And so that already bifurcates or splits the family. And that's been a complaint and a problem that we've had for a long time because we have the highest interaction between adult and child in the country, and we want to make sure that the family stays together for all the experiences they have at the museum. And they usually stay about two, two and a half hours, and they get hungry, they leave because we have no cafe. Artville has a capacity of only 75 people, and in the summer, there's lines and it's very crowded. And also, the school groups swarm the entrance. We have 10,000 to 12,000 school group visitors a year, and they tend to sometimes edge out visitors. We have inadequate facilities for events, so therefore, there are much revenue loss that happens at the museum because of that, people that would like to have an event there, but we don't have the facility. And it's an aging facility. The restrooms need to be redone. We painted them recently for the American Alliance of Museums Conference, but they need more than just a paint job. The spaces are underutilized. The atrium is a beautiful space, but it really needs to be activated. So when Gyroscope looked at the site, they looked at its placement, and obviously, there's visibility from light rail and from Main Street. And so the master site plan goal is to actually create high visibility in downtown, to really make it pop and be a wow, to increase attendance, to increase earned revenue, and continue to be sustainable, and increase our capacity. We want to activate, reorganize, and leverage all the existing assets that we have and build upon that investment the city and donors have made in us over the years. We also want to add visitor experiences and amenities. We know we need to do that. And as you might know, with children's museums, you tend to age out. In other words, when the oldest child gets to be about seven or eight, they look for other activities, and they don't want to really necessarily come to the museum. And so therefore, we want to add other activities and, and experiences that would keep the whole family much longer and increase our attendance from about 1,903 is our capacity right now on a daily basis to about 3,165 with this plan. So I gave each of you a floor plan so that you could see it, so that way, it might be a little bit easier as I kind of walk through it quickly. So on the bottom left-hand side, the entrance would be moved there so that it would be an entry beacon, and you could really see it from Main Street. And as you come through, you don't have to split up your family anymore. Your family stays together, which is really exciting. And we have, as you can see briefly, four different areas based on the arts, naturescape, texturescape, lightscape, and soundscape. And they all build on experiences that we have now and, and make them even more deeply in the area of learning and excitement and experiences for visitors. You also see a gift shop there, right on, on Pepper. You can see, as you go up on the slide, you can see the cafe on the left-hand side along Robeson. That actually will be wonderful because we would be able to have revenues in off-hours, and it's right there, you know, you just look down Main Street and you'd see it. You can also see where the entrance was. If going right, you see a party classroom. So where the entrance is now, that would be closed, and we would have a area where we could have birthday parties. We wish we had another place for birthday parties because sometimes we have to turn people away from birthday parties. And also, other uses for that area. Then you see an enlargement of Artville. Where Artville is to the far right becomes texturescape. We move offices out to the space in the workshop area, and then some offices are expanded a little bit upstairs, and thereby, we're really gaining a lot of square footage. The whole campus is 2.3 acres, but much of it is underutilized. Then if you move back, you see a wonderful soundscape skywalk. That actually comes from a rooftop terrace, which we can use for facilities and events, events at the facility. And then you can see the atrium area where we have activated it with a wonderful climber, naturescape, a stage. And then lastly, at the top, you can see the classroom is renovated, and there's a wraparound deck, and there will be a school group entrance. So it solves many of the issues that we have at the museum. So as you can see with this slide, it is a dramatic entrance, and that entrance has on it many different blocks and cubes, as you can see. Some of those are activated by visitors, they change out, and some are activated by artists. This definitely improves the visitor flow, keeping families together, as I mentioned, the separate entrance for school groups, and also the facility rentals. So how does that really increase what we're doing without having a whole, brand-new build? It actually increases the early childhood galleries by 200%, and we all know there's a need in the community for support and informal learning with parents and children. We had looked into the idea of creating preschool, but we found that actually, there is not, it does not reach enough children. And with this kind of improvement of the facilities, it really reaches way more families. We have the indoor exhibit gallery increased by 153%. Outdoor visitor experiences, you can see, increased by 244%. The overall visitor capacity increased by 166%. Another thing that's very important to us are the core learning focuses of art, discovery, innovative ideas, early childhood learning, as you know, STEAM, which is science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, open-ended experiences, and connectivity to nature. We've always been about the arts, but we look at the arts for inspiration to view other disciplines and topics. And so nature is very important, and since we have the atrium, we want to activate it even more and bring it inside and really showcase nature with state-of-the-art energy, retrofit, water efficiencies, harvesting rain, solar energy. We have a wonderful partnership, as you know, with the Department of Environmental Sustainability and Management, and with their support, we're looking at different ways that we can bring that into the museum. Locally sourced products, recycled content. We have the recyclery, which is extremely popular, building as a teaching tool and awareness on nature, indoor and outdoor art making. And we also want the air quality of the museum to be good with non-toxic materials used and finishes and maximizing natural light. Sometimes it's very dark in the museum. We did not do this in a vacuum in terms of just looking at what's best for the museum. We really did tie it to what's best in the community and downtown Mesa. It's a very exciting time to be in Mesa because there's so much happening with downtown. And so really, it's very important that we tie into what is happening in the city and help transform. I mean, imagine this museum as happening today and all the activation that could happen around it. We want to be a regional leader for families to grow and learn in creative arts and exploration. We are very unique, and we have a competitive strategic advantage. Because we are not just a regular children's museum, we really do focus on the arts. We want to create a new community hub that the museum is already a third place for families, safe haven for learning. We know that by raising creative thinkers, connecting families, and building strong communities are at the core of preparing children for the future, and we want to help prepare those children for the future. You might know that our audience, 41% come from Mesa. I gave you, on the back of the floor plan, shows you a pie chart. 28% of our audience is from the Hispanic and Latino households. 80% are caregivers of, 80% of the caregivers are women who come to the museum, and most people who visit the museum on a regular basis are about a 30-minute drive to the museum. So even though we are Mesa-based, we also have 22% of our membership and visitors coming from Gilbert, 14% from Chandler, 7% from Tempe, 6% from Phoenix, 3% from Scottsdale, 2% from Queen Creek, and 5% is from many other places, including nationally and regionally. They drive as far as Flagstaff to visit the museum. We're very proud of that. And before I move on from the slide, I want to mention that it's not just in writing that we meet Mesa's 2040 Plan goals, but excerpt from the plan states that "It is really important to offer opportunities for active learning and participation," which we've done from the start. It also states that "Cultural resources help communities preserve and celebrate the past, enabling citizens and visitors to make connections between the important ideas and issues of today and the leaders' achievements and events from the community's heritage." And lastly, the city of Mesa, and we are proud of this, recognizes the value artists bring to a community and seeks to partner with the artistic community, creative businesses, and local nonprofit organizations to create policies and environments that help artists work and thrive in the community. And as you know, we showcase many artists at the museum. So how can we make this a reality? Well, the project is in phases. According to the master site plan, it's actually in two phases. The board is using a national fundraising model, and we've had transformational success with that by building the donor base and being ready for our future capital campaign. So we hope this project will be supported through public-private funds. And the total project, you're probably wondering, it is 24 million. That is not a comprehensive number and does not include O and A, but we are working on that with city engineers and others to get the final numbers. We've been working with Trevor Collin in the engineering department. He's been amazing support and help for us. So we figure there would be two phases, excuse me, please. One would be 10 to 16 million, and the second would be 8 to 10 million, to make this, excuse me again, a reality. So without further ado, I give you the video fly-through. As you can see, this is going from Main Street. Here is the front of the museum where you would enter with parking spaces along Pepper. You'd look up and see that as you enter. Again, the block's changing with artists and visitor input. As you enter, you see the visitor desk with the store right behind. And then you enter into a raised ceiling, another sculptural interactive that mimics the front called Lightscape. People really enjoy our blacklight space. We have a larger pegboard. And looking at texturescape is the area where the renovated Artville will be, and that's a glimpse at what would happen in that area. There's a mini skywalk in there, there's activated spaces so that older children can enjoy the space as well. The exhibition that we currently have in the Whiteman Family Gallery becomes an art walk like a beaded necklace with different opportunities to still engage in art and activities. The blacklight room becomes an interactive space with different lightscapes and interaction that they can do. And this is looking out toward the atrium with a glass area that could be like garage doors that can lift up when we want to have events with a climber outside, new elevator to access that from the skywalk, activated spaces and a stage. Okay, I just need to get back to, sorry. There we go. So I want to acknowledge all the many people that contributed to this master site plan. They're numerous, as you can see here, board and staff. And lastly, before taking questions, I'd like to read a final quote. And it's not the one on the slide. "When seven-year-old Cade visits the IDEA museum with the group Special Need Services, you almost always find him creating in the museum's exhibition gallery. With a big imagination and a love for making colorful art, Cade looks forward to bringing his ideas to life at the museum." His Special Need Services Coordinator, Lisa Hunmuler, states, "The IDEA museum gives our group one place that we can enjoy over and over again." So we hope that you'll help us make this a reality.
Great, thank you, Sunny. Council, any questions for Sunny? We do have several people have requested to speak, but before we move to that, any questions for Sunny? Thank you. David.
Sunny, thank you for a great job. You've done a real good job in, in using the facility. It's a very data facility. I've been there many times. Obviously, I serve on as a council liaison from the city council, but it does really need renovation. I've been to the museum where you have to step over people because there's just not enough room. So I would hope that the council would, as it looks at its budget at Parks Bond, that we consider providing additional funding for the museum and, and the remodel because it's, it's, it's great that it's full. We've got a lot of use of the museum, but it's a data facility, and we want to continue to bring more people in the museum. So I would recommend that as we look at the budget for bonds and parks and bonds, that we consider adding additional dollars to that.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Lure, and thank you for your service on the board. We appreciate it.
Yes, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Sunny. I, I've had the opportunity to go to that store building since I was a young kid, so I know how old it is. It's probably before me.
You're not that old.
However, with that said, I appreciate all the effort that staff and the board has put in for this. My grandchildren, my nieces and nephews, I myself have been there numerous times, and so I, I just appreciate the learning aspect. I, I really appreciate the look at renewable energy, the solar, the biophilia, that stuff, because that broadens people's horizon on how we should probably start building today and in the future. But it allows all our visitors to have great experiences, so I appreciate you doing this. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. Council, other comments before we hear from those who've requested to speak? All right, thank you very much, Sunny.
Thank you, Mayor.
The first speaker, the first person that's requested to speak is Mayumi Gertsberger. Mayumi, are you present? I'm sorry, yeah, please come on up and have a seat in front of one of the microphones. And for everyone in the room, we have, everyone who's filled out a blue card has three minutes to speak. If you just give us your name, your address, and then we'll start timing your three minutes. But welcome.
Hi. Hello, my name is Mayumi, and I was born and grew up in Japan. The reason I came to Arizona is because I married a man who grew up in Tempe, Arizona. In March 2009, I was laid off. My daughter was about 10 months old at that time. Transitioning from a carrier mom to a stay-home mom was not easy, and I had no clue what to do. I was really worried how to care for and support my daughter's growth. I felt ill-equipped. The first day I came to IDEA museum, I knew this is the exact place I was looking for for my child. We became members right away because even at nine months old, my daughter was able to explore textures, colors, and how things work. We have literally come every day, sometimes, sometimes multiple times a day ever since. My daughter Hannah spent much time in Uptown in the first year. The kitchen and the reading area were her favorite. She enjoyed wearing all different costumes whenever the new exhibitions were open. She also loved using many sorts of pens, pencils, papers, and materials of which I cannot provide enough at home. Sitting there, it brought me such joy to see her learning new things. It was a relief for me to know her life was made richer by being there. I didn't have to be the one coming up with the ideas and activities. Every summer, we go to Japan and spend several weeks there. Every time we come back to Arizona, the first place she wants to visit is the IDEA museum. My son Hayden is seven years old, a typical energetic boy. I challenged myself to race him with our video games and less TV time, and this museum gave me many ideas how to get him into activities. However, the new iPad screens in the hub area changed my mind about technology for him. Since they are all professional outlets, not for playing games, I purchased the same app on my iPad, and it is always on the go when we take a long flights. The Money exhibition in 2012 made me find out that he could be obsessed with Play-Doh for hours. Even the Bon Voyage exhibition in 2014 taught him all about outdoor camping and convinced us to take him camping in the real outdoors. Now that they've had so much exposure to the IDEA museum, they enjoy doing their own crafts at home and drawing for, drawing for leisure. They are always coming up with new ideas and ways of creating, like writing and illustrating stories. I am forever grateful to IDEA museum for their companionship and providing a home away from home for my children. They really saved me when I didn't know how I was going to better the life of my kids and how to make the most of my time with them. I know I couldn't have done it on my own. I'm so glad the IDEA museum was there. I felt empowered to be a support for them to grow into these creative and curious kids. I'm confident they'll be successful in life, and that makes me feel really happy. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Mayumi. Next is Sean Jordan. Sorry, Dr. Sean Jordan. Good to have you with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Sean Jordan, and I am a tenured associate professor of engineering education at Arizona State University and have been on the Idea Museum Board for the last four years. I'm also a resident of Mesa in District Six and do research in K-12 STEM and STEAM education and was recognized nationally with a Presidential Early Career Award for scientists and engineers last year. I'm here today to express my support for the expanded bond request of the Idea Museum and to help it become a regional leader. And my opinions today are mine and not that of ASU nor the Idea Museum. I grew up in the Midwest and went to pretty typical schools. My parents were both teachers, and they believed that learning happens both inside and outside of the classroom. They made sure that I had numerous enrichment opportunities outside of the classroom environment through conferences and volunteering and summer camps and also museums. And I credit those enrichment opportunities for the reason why, or one of the primary reasons why I'm the successful contributing member of society that I am today, because I saw the world outside of the classroom as well as the world inside of the classroom. When I moved to Arizona, I was really impressed with seeing the amazing, particularly in Mesa, the amazing cultural opportunities and educational opportunities that were available specifically in the enrichment space. During my interview, I went to the Mesa Arts Center. I saw the Idea Museum, the Arizona Museum of Natural History, and I thought, wow, I would not have expected to see these gems here in Arizona. And it also got me thinking, huh, as someone who does research in this area, what can I do to help support these initiatives to help them grow and thrive even more? It's well-known in research that significant neural development happens early in childhood, particularly in the first few years of a child's life. And I think museums like the Idea Museum really can help provide that critical enrichment, both extracurricular and curricular, for our children to thrive. We live in a state where education choice is a very hot topic, but to me, education choice extends beyond the classroom and also is about choice for our parents in what enrichment opportunities they provide for their kids so that they grow to be the successful, creative members of society that they want to be. As council members, you have the power to give our citizens excellent enrichment choices for their children. I'm in full support of the additional budget request for the Idea Museum bond to help make their vision to support future generations of Arizonians a reality. I hope that you will all give our voters the chance to support future generations as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jordan. Next is Tim Boyle.
Good morning, Counsel. My name is Tim Boyle. I live in Mesa over by Westwood High School. I was asked to come this morning by my brother Josh, who has some important lawyer thing that he thought was more important than this. What am I supposed to say for him? Josh and I attended the Idea Museum as children, also with our brother Jacob and my sister Sally. It inspired a love of creativity and adventure in us. We all ended up in creative careers. Josh is a lawyer. Okay, so maybe that's not creative, but since he made me get up super early, he made me get up super early, I'll tell you that he is an award-winning painter of toy soldiers in his spare time. Be sure you remind him of that. Sally teaches ballet at the Heritage Academy, and she toured China with her college dance troupe. Jacob got a degree in video game programming from Stanford, but with that degree, because you can do many things with it, he wrote the interface software for BMW. He worked at Local Motors on their bus, their automated bus, and he is currently working on a VR video game called Titanfall 2, which you may not have heard of, but your kids probably play. I lived in New York for 10 years. I taught at the Graduate School of Urban Planning at Columbia. I designed houses for Jerry Seinfeld, Jay-Z, Bette Midler, Vera Wang. And in New York, my kids had the opportunity to visit the best museums in the world. The Idea Museum is becoming that caliber of children's museum, on par with the Brooklyn Children's Museum and the Manhattan Children's Museum. The new facade is absolutely amazing. All the new buildings built on our Main Street, I know there's a bunch of stuff that's going to be built pretty soon, should follow that architectural example and should look like 2020, current and be inspiring and memorable. The Idea Museum is an amazing leader for our downtown. It inspires those who go to it. When potential developers see architecture and institutions like that, they want to build near them. Please support this update to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. I think it's a good thing that Josh was a busy lawyer this morning. Did a good job.
Good morning, Councilwoman Mayor. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Jen Duff. I'm a downtown Mesa resident. I'm also honorary board chair of the Idea Museum. I served from 2010 to 2016 on the board. I was going to fill you with all kinds of statistics about the Idea Museum, how we've had a 67% increase in our attendance since rebranding in 2014, that Mesa's children, only 36% are school-ready versus the national average of 48%. And 95% of a child's brain development is before the age of five. And our largest growing demographic here in Mesa are young families. But there's something more powerful that I would like to share with you, and that is a letter from our founder, John Whiteman. And he prepared this letter for me to read this morning. "In recent years, school curricula in Arizona has shifted heavily towards common core subjects of science, technology, engineering, and math. But what about the arts? Although some may regard the art education as a luxury, simple, creative activities are critical building blocks of child development. Learning to create, imagine, appreciate, and think out of the box are the social aesthetics that may be even more important than ever to development of children as they grow in an ever-increasing, complex world. So why in Mesa? Because it's a family-child-centric community. That is why we chose to build an art museum here 40 years ago. We wanted Mesa to have something really special where children from all over the state could come and appreciate art at the three-and-a-half-foot level. For children to make something and take home and something Mesa could be proud to house. We made an investment 40 years ago to enrich Mesa and its children. Today, think out of the box and dream what Mesa and its children can become 40 years from now." That's from John Whiteman, founder of the Idea Museum. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you, Mayor Giles, a member of the council. It's good to see you. I had the opportunity to meet with many of you and discuss the improvements that the Idea Museum is looking at. As a resident of Mesa and a member of the board, I'm here to encourage you to adopt the Mesa Idea Museum into your proposed bond for Parks and Rec. At a level of funding that will allow us to at least move forward with our first phase of the improvements that have been discussed and so well displayed. I want to reinforce many of the points that have been made by previous speakers, and to do that, I'll just say amen, and I hope you are listening to the things that will benefit the youth and the children of this community by this important institution being able to grow and to improve. It is a 40-year-old structure. I'm grateful that we're looking at a plan that's going to open up that arched roof. That's been something I've been strongly advocating for because it's such a beautiful and it opens up the building and will make it more inviting and a better use of space. It has a community benefit. I remember when we met with Councilman Thompson, him commenting about the number of residents out in District Six who talk about coming to the Idea Museum. So I hope as a council, and I've sat in your shoes, that you don't look at this as, well, whose district is it in? This is an asset that benefits the entire community, the entire region. This is an asset that should be looked at as a vital part of the efforts that this council has made to downtown Mesa. It's one of the jewels in the crown, if you will, of downtown Mesa, and it does need some help. It does need some improvements and some expansion. And we've had a lot of help from the City of Mesa, and we certainly do appreciate that. But I want to reiterate, this is your building. We are your tenants. This is a building owned by the City of Mesa, and I would hope that you would look at it as an opportunity for you to improve an asset that is owned by the citizens of the City of Mesa. One of the very first things that ought to be done, as you've heard, is the expansion of Artville. This is the area where the early childhood education portion takes place to the greatest degree. And with some help in the bond and fundraising by our board, we hope to be able to expand that area so that more and more young children can come and use it. We have an atrium that's completely underused. We have no facilities which we can really generate income, either through a café or through rooms that can be rented for parties and so forth to help fund and encourage the museum to grow. So between Artville and revenue-generating opportunities, expansion of the atrium, splitting of families, you've heard that, we got to get the school kids coming from the back door instead of the front door so they're not jamming up the facility. There's a lot of things that need to be done, and frankly, they can't be done without some help from the city in being a part of this bond. And so I leave it to your wisdom and your discussion as to how to go about that and how much, but I can guarantee you from a position in the board and others that whatever resources we are allocated as part of the bond to expand and grow the Idea Museum will be well-used and will be used for the benefit of you and for the children in this community as we work together to modify and expand your building and improve it for the citizens of Mesa. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. Those are all the cards we have for this agenda item. So, Mr. Brady, just so we're clear, this was for information. The next item that we have on our agenda is kind of in a similar theme. We're talking about potential projects that could be on a Parks Bond, but this was a kind of a more detailed presentation of one of those projects that we'll consider in the next few weeks.
Correct.
Okay. Let me just say amen to all of the supporters that have been in here. My family is very involved, very engaged in the Idea Museum. I've been there more times than I can count. It's wall-to-wall kids when I go. I'm sure if we'd made the improvements that are suggested as part of this presentation, it would do nothing but add to the success of the museum. So I certainly hope we can figure out a way to continue to support the Idea Museum. So thank you for everyone who's here supporting the Idea Museum. The next item on our agenda, again, we're taking these out of order just to accommodate the fact we have a lot of people standing here that, so we're going to try to get through these cards as quickly as we can. Next item is Agenda Item 2C, I'm sorry, 2D. That's to hear a presentation and provide direction on general obligation bond projects, including transportation, public safety, parks, and cultural projects and Mesa Plays for the 2018 election. It's good to have our city engineer Beth Hunning and Scott Butler with us today. Thank you. We look forward to your presentation.
Good morning, Mayor and Counsel. Today, we'll be providing an update on potential projects for a 2018 general obligation bond. You'll recall about a month ago, we brought a preliminary list to you. The direction provided at that time was to focus on public safety as well as parks and culture to further develop concepts and preliminary cost estimates. To that end, we appreciate the efforts of the engineering staff as well as our client departments to be able to develop these concepts. These are concepts, they're preliminary, they're provided to give us a base for our discussion as well as the cost estimates. For the projects that move forward, there's a variety of things that continue to influence how these projects will eventually end up, including direction from council, input from citizens, as well as analysis by staff. So that end, we'll start with parks and culture. In order to move through these slides efficiently, Beth and I are going to tag-team them. Parks and culture, we've broken up into four categories: athletic fields, park amenities, paths, and then our cultural area, including the library and the museum improvements. So Beth will start us off with the athletic fields.
So we get quite a few requests for athletic fields around the city, and I'm sure you do as well. We've set up a series of six projects, and as Scott mentioned, we've provided a lot of graphics in the presentations. They're all very conceptual. When we get into public input and stakeholder input, they're subject to change, and things do change. So beginning with Monterey Park Athletic Fields, Power in Guadalupe, this is a project we started in the 2012 bond program. We purchased some land, put in some trees, did some parking. This project would expand the site and add three soccer fields and a quad for ball. And along with it, we would use the existing city's land, but we would need to purchase a five-acre land parcel that's kind of in the middle of all the land we currently own. It would also give us a restroom and some of the basic amenities. That's a $12.3 million project. Moving on to Crisman and Elliott, these are actually regional flood control basins on Elliott Road near Crisman. This would be kind of just formalizing something that's happening there today with a lot of drop-in games, and people have been parking on Elliott Road, creating some issues for us there. But we would put in two former fields with lights and then continue to do some of the drop-in fields that are occurring by putting goals out there and expanding the parking to get people safely off the road and be sure they have a place to be while their kids compete or play on the fields. That's a $2.5 million project. North Center Street Athletic Fields, as many of you know, we're engaged in an MOU for development of the six fields at Riverview today. This would be a replacement of those six fields. We currently own 5.8 acres. We would need to acquire an additional 18-plus acres and put the six fields in that would replace the Riverview fields. It's estimated at $14.2 million. The next series of slides is actually a series of slides, three or four slides that are at Red Mountain. You've heard discussions on Mesa Plays and had questions. We've kind of broken it up a little bit to kind of sequence you through it, and it's set up more by function. The first part of the project is nine artificial turf fields. That would be community fields with the artificial turf. We can play every day, all year round, and it would be open to the community as well as it could be involved in tournament play. That would be $25 million for this portion of the project. The next portion of the project would be 13 additional natural grass fields. We use the term soccer fields, but that's really to give us a footprint. We can play a lot of different games on this size of field, including lacrosse and some of the other popular games that we need fields for. Because these are natural grass fields, we'd be expanding the lake. And then because we'd be using them for tournament play, we'd put in two championship fields. You can kind of see them in the lower-left corner with bleachers in the middle so that you could have full championship fields. And then the third slide brings it all back together and leaves us a little bit of room for a future fieldhouse that we might be able to do with future programs at the site. Together, those two projects, the community fields would be $25 million, the tournament fields $30, and then the fieldhouse would be in the future. Moving on around the site and crossing the road, we get a lot of requests for ball fields. This would add a quad north of Brown adjacent to our other quads, and we're estimating $7.2 million for the project.
Moving on to park amenities, first, the city center plaza is a project that was allocated money from the 2012 Parks Bond in order to conduct some preliminary concept work. This plaza would develop into a two-acre park with various amenities, including water features, an event lawn, restroom space, and then landscaping improvements with a total cost of $5.3 million. Next, a popular request is for dog parks. This project would, has identified two parks. This would include a new 3.5-acre park at Carriage Lane and then a 1.5-acre expansion of the dog park at Countryside Park with an estimated cost of $1.1 million. Moving on to our pathways, this first project, Signal Butte and Elliott Park, this is a park that was allocated funding with the 2012 Park Bond. This is an area that surrounds the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant. This project has been split up into two phases. The first phase is what's currently funded with the 2012 Park Bond. It's this area to the south highlighted in yellow. And as part of the 2012 funding, it includes pathways, ramadas, restrooms, a parking area, as well as additional landscaping improvements. This second phase to the north would include a development of an additional 46.38 acres. This second phase to the north would include a development of an additional 46.3 acres. It includes the pathway as well as a bridge across the Siphon Draw Wash for access and then a turf playground area in the south portion as well. The estimated cost is $5 million. The next pathway is the Lehigh Crossing Shared Use Path. This pathway would utilize the South Canal. It would include development of two trailheads, first at McDowell Road east of the 202, and then the pathway would continue north to Val Vista and the 202 where another trailhead. You can see on the map where possible future pathways could be developed to tie into this, this project. The estimate is at $5.6 million. Our last shared use path is along the Eastern Canal in the city center. It includes a stretch from Brown Road to Broadway Road. As you can see depicted on the map, it's the red, the solid red section. There's a current CIP project that's the yellow piece. And then to the north and south of those two pieces are currently paved pathways. So when, when this project is completed, it would give us a stretch from McKellips all the way to Baseline Road for a continuous pathway. The estimate is at $5.1 million. It does include the addition of five signalized pedestrian crossings to make that pathway safe and accessible.
So moving on into the final part of the Parks and Cultural Projects. The first project, I think you heard a presentation from our library director Heather a couple of weeks ago on the need for a library in southeast Mesa. The map kind of shows where we currently have libraries and where the library would be needed in the future. We've been working with the Queen Creek District High School. It's currently going to be located in the Eastmark subdivision. You can see it on the right, near Ellsworth and Ray. They have land identified there and they're getting ready to start the high school. They've set aside some land at the front of the site, right off of Ray Road, a library site, and you can see it on the left, adjacent to their buildings. They're currently proposing 23,000 square foot. Our library study identified 35,000 square foot. So we'll need to work with them on how to configure and, and best set up that type of square footage. It's, it will be located in Eastmark and the proposed estimated cost for that is $16.8 million. As I think Heather explained, this would be a shared use facility with the high school. Moving on into our other libraries, Dobson Library and our main library are, of course, older libraries and do need some refreshing and updates. We've included some programming space for Dobson Library and potential facade improvements, $1.5 million. And at the main library, additional programming space and $1.5 million for potential improvements to the main library. And the federal building renovation is actually a project we began as part of the 2012 Parks Bond funding. We still have a remaining $4.3 million in that bond funding. We've expended $700,000 of the original monies that were allocated to do demolition and let an asbestos abatement inside of the building. If you go inside today, the pictures show there, it's a very unique, older building. Lots of really cool brick and wood on the inside of that building. And when you get in, it's wide open. It's a big space inside. We'd like a little bit of additional money to go in and create an open shell space for public use in our downtown where we can have events or indoor activities, recreational activities, or maybe activities affiliated with the museums. So this would be an additional $3.2 million that we'd need. We really need to get the bones of this facility up to code and so there's a lot of different HVAC and electrical improvements that are needed. The Idea Museum, you just heard a presentation on that. We're proposing an initial first phase of $2.4 million to, you can see in blue on the, on the site plan that Sonny provided, the floor plan. That's the area for the Artville expansion. We would move the offices out of that space to the back building and the shops, renovate that for the offices, and then renovate this area to start the program of increasing Artville and Textur scape. With any additional monies we might have left, then we would go outside and work on the exterior courtyard where they'd like to do parties and other activities. Also kind of seed them to start some of their fundraising programs for the museum.
This slide just provides a summary of the combined cost estimates for those projects with the Parks and Cultural information at $138.7 million. Finally, for public safety, this is just the list of the projects that we'll go through. First is fire apparatus. Our, our fire medical department and specifically their fire fleet area does a tremendous job of, of managing the apparatus. They push them from a performance aspect to make sure that they're available. They do a tremendous job. They have a great schedule as far as scheduling out their apparatus. You can see the schedule over the next several years. It includes pumpers, ladders, et cetera, with an estimated cost of $24.7 million.
Excuse me, Scott. Mr. Thompson.
Chris, is the pumper for Eastmark included in this? Because I think, wasn't Brookdale funding that?
No, I don't, don't we have the funding set aside somewhere else? So it's not included in this $24.7? It would be?
The apparatus is funded in the project.
And another funding, we have another.
And I apologize, those are specifically for replacement, not tied to, to new construction.
So Fire Station 221, it'll be the, the fire station we've all been talking about in the Eastmark area. We've worked with our data analyst, Mark Castleton, and he's helped us with the four-minute response time. We've actually identified two potential fire stations out in this area. The one on the left is near Ellsworth and Warner. The one on the right is near Signal Butte and Galveston as being the optimal locations for fire stations. We originally had conversations with the developer, Eastmark, and they set aside, it's actually kind of in the middle of that graphic, a site inside, but that is not really our optimal location. So we're working with them potentially about getting a different site. They are committed to providing us a site for the fire station. The estimated cost, the remaining cost we'd need for this project is $5.1 million. We do have funding from the development agreement for this development to pay for part of the project.
Mr. Thompson.
And I know that Chris and I have talked about this several times and my preference is really to shift the station out to Ellsworth, especially since Point 22 Road's going to go all the way through to Ellsworth. It'll give us a straight shot along with 219, I think it is, it's on Signal Butte. Just to, you know, when you start looking at the, the fire station, do, you know, the, the location that, that is set aside right now is right in the middle of a subdivision. And I'm not necessarily sure that people would want sirens and bells and whistles going off at, you know, all hours of the, hopefully not all hours, but at night or so forth. So I think shifting it out would also allow us to get to more of the traffic accidents that are taking place on Ellsworth and so forth.
I'm meeting with Eastmark today, so.
And it is also important for us too, because if you look at where the high school's going in right there, that creates additional traffic concerns for us when we locate a fire station, so it'd be good to go out. Moving on, fire, we need a fire station in northeast Mesa and up near the Power and Brown. Done the four-minute response time analysis, it looks like with, around the circle, kind of centers on McClellan and Power. They are very geographic location oriented, so we try to get them within that area. So we're currently looking at properties in the area. It's an estimated $12 million for this station. The next slide is Police Substation in the northeast part of the city as well. We would have an opportunity to combine this with Fire Station 222 if we can find the necessary property. We think we need about eight acres for a combined site, but it would allow us to combine fueling facilities and parking and some of those other things. We're currently looking for various parcels in the area. This project, they're not as dependent geographic, on their geographic location as fire is, so fire would govern if we do a combined facility. The estimated cost for this, this station would be $25 million. And then finally, we have the Evidence Processing and Storage Facility. This has been a long-term need for the police department. They have storage requirements that are required to meet legally, where they keep certain things for years, sometimes for hundreds of years, depending on the type of evidence they have. Yeah. So they would like to build the first phase of an evidence facility up at North Center Street, about 30,000 square feet and an estimated $10 million. If you've been up there, you know we're putting the new household hazardous waste facility right there, so this would be in the same area and would allow them to store their evidence a little more effectively than what we're doing, plus provide some room for growth. And finally, public safety, fiber. We do have all of our facilities connected as, as much as we can around the city. We have quite a network of conduit and fiber. What you see on this map is what the $10 million would, would provide for our public safety communications groups. We would complete a downtown fiber loop and conduit as well as the yellow lines are actually infill lines to our outer loop that connect facilities further out and away from the downtown area.
Council, this next slide prevents a summary of what those cost estimates look like for the public safety projects with a total of $86.8 million. So as you, as you look at both, both areas, the Parks and Culture as well as the public safety, it, the, the total cost estimate at this time is $225.5 million. And with that, we'll take questions that you may have. We also have department representatives to answer any specific questions that you may have.
So Mayor and Council, appreciate the presentation by Beth and Scott and all the departments that have been working on these proposals and trying to get the scope of the projects to come into alignment with a, get as close as we can to the $200 million. We wanted to first today, really, just as a purpose, kind of in more detail, this is I think the second or third time we've been in front of council with a list of projects. We've asked council to give us feedback and appreciate the feedback we've gotten on different projects. And you've noticed we've kind of scaled some of these projects down, but at the same time, we're trying to set a priority of building off of progress that we made back in the 2012 Parks Bond where we may have bought property or done a phase. And so some of these projects are continuing to complete that. Back in that time period, we shifted a lot of money from the eastern part of Mesa to the western part of Mesa to complete a lot of parks projects. Now we're going back and completing a lot of the projects that were initiated, either design or land acquisition. But this is just a list that we wanted to present to council to just continue to work on. Obviously, we may, we may need to continue to work on, on the prioritization as far as dollar amounts, but we wanted just to share this with council and get a, you know, start having a discussion and getting some direction. We anticipate we'd come back to council in the next couple of weeks after we've gotten some feedback with maybe a proposed final draft for council to consider moving forward. Also, we would, we need to start also kind of creating the, managing the expectations of how soon these projects get done. That's always a fun part of this process because we can't build all these in one year and it's intended that they would be built out over four or five years, just like it was 2012? 12 when we approved the last bond package and here we are now in 2018, actually six years later, talking about going to the next project. So it takes a while for us and it's intended that these are projects that span four to five years, maybe six years as the current case. So that's, we would want to come back and talk a little bit about anticipating kind of how these projects would be phased in over a period of time. So that's where we stand today. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Chris, I still have concerns on the City Center Plaza, the proposed City Center Plaza with the parking. You know, I've, I've talked to numerous employees, just kind of walking around and asking questions and, and they're not happy with the, even the current parking situation with the garage and the, and the golf cart. Because the golf cart's like a little two-seater and that's if you can find the guy, is what I've been told. And if we're going to eliminate parking and push more of our employees into the parking garage, we really need to have a robust system where we can move people back and forth from, you know, from the mornings, inclement weather, back and forth for lunches, different things like that. So if we're going to eliminate parking, we need to make sure that we're as accommodating as we can be for the, for the employees that are, are currently parking in that, in that area.
Sure. And Council, Mayor, Councilman, we'll, we'll be glad to do that. Most of the accommodation of the, the cart was intent, is intended, frankly, it started as a security measure to get them there during the dark. So it wasn't that, so we're moving them back and forth. Frankly, we are becoming an urban community in downtown. I think we will find, Mesa doesn't lack in parking compared to most major cities. We just need to figure out where that distribution is. The prior council that created the Civic Center Plaza kind of pushed us back on the city staff, if you recall, that we shouldn't be worried about parking because that's something that, that was kind of the philosophy back then, that that we would, we could find alternatives. And we are intent on doing that. We'll have, what we're planning on doing, you'll see in a presentation later, is we need a, we're, we've done a preliminary parking study that would accommodate what would happen when we lose the parking for the Civic Center, as well as we introduce the ASU Building, as well as the Innovation Studio. We need, we, we're working on a comprehensive plan so it accommodates all of those parking needs in the future. We have had conversations with Mr. Graham, who has a 1,200 parking garage right across the street. So those are opportunities and he's opened that up, or even a surface parking diagonal from this block. So there's, I think there's opportunities and I, to your point, we will work to make it as easy as possible to get our employees back and forth, but I don't think any of these are much further than a couple hundred yards from where they work and so, but we'll be sensitive to that if we need to provide for additional transportation. Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Mr. Brady, you're not off the mic yet. In our planning statistically and looking out in the future, our Lehigh Crossings area, we have 900 new homes up there along with a, a large potential development coming in. So is there any, maybe the fire chief could give some insight, but is there any plans for a fire station in that area? Have we done the statistics and analysis to provide coverage for that area?
We have, we have, the, the ones you see in this plan, in the public safety bond, are not the full plant, not full build-out of fire stations. So there, we anticipate there'll be additional fire stations in the future. Beth even showed the idea that there would be two stations down in the Eastmark area. We're just saying for now, for the next couple of years, next three to four years, the priority would be to get the Eastmark one completed and based on the, the statistics that we're running, the analysis that we're running, the next one that's needed would be the one in northeast. But that doesn't mean we don't need one in Lehigh or others according to the data scientists and what we've seen from them.
Well, and yeah, I agree with that. It's just I want to keep that in the pipeline.
Oh, yeah, no, no, absolutely. And we could come back and share that, that there's, how many more do we have, Mary? Do you think that in addition to the two we showed today, is there four more in our master plan? Do you remember what the number is?
At least four more.
Yeah.
Yes, at least four more.
So we, they're on that list, yes.
Sure, that was easy.
Mr. Lauren.
Mr. Brady, I had a question on the federal building. There is no programming for that building as, as it currently stands, so.
We've, yeah.
My, I'm, I'm just concerned about putting additional money in that building where my preference would be to shift it over to the Idea Museum, but can, can you talk about the potential programming for that building? What do you anticipate maybe happening in the future that we would want to devote those funds?
Sure. Well, recall, I mean, this project, this building was in the 2012 Bond Election for the purpose of the History Muse, History Museum. And, but it was intended to be a partnership to raise, the, the History Museum, Historical Society, excuse me, would need to demonstrate that they could provide for the funding for the operations of that facility and they weren't able to meet that, that goal. During the time, we've looked at that building and as we've gone through and done a lot of the environmental work and pulled it together, you know, we own it, it was given to us, you know, shifted to us from the federal government. We've tried to look and see how could we, we would like program it. We've, we've had programming discussions about it. There are plans to do it, but it's difficult to do that without the funding to even make it available for the public to enter into. And it is an asset of the city that sits between two very good museums. So we've talked about a variety of different topics about maybe having it be an interactive indoor space for children and we have some plans to do that. But that would be more than what we're requesting here. The dollars we're requesting here would just make it available for the public to have, and we could have recreational activities, but more intended just for the public to have receptions or meetings and begin that phase of it and then come back at a later time with specific programming. So I guess part of the challenge is we've, we've kind of invested a lot of money, not just in the, what you see physically, we've spent, how much in design already?
We spent between demolition and abatement, design, $700,000.
So we have $700,000 invested in that part of it. We're just kind of, we kind of felt like if we could just take it to the neck, just a few, you know, the dollars in here would allow us then to make it open up there, to the public and enjoy that space. Council can look at it a different way, just we've been working on this project. Just we've been working on this project for since I got here, and we're just trying to figure out how can we get it open so the public can enjoy that space. It wouldn't be a lot of equipment or other things in there. It would really be for community meetings. You could have socials there. You could have lots of other creative things in there. But we do want we've asked the Parks Department to look at how to create an indoor space for it. We've done some studies. But again, that would be additional cost. We just didn't feel like that this was the year to ask for those additional costs for that programming.
Mr. Hurdian.
Same in line, the federal building, there's specific restrictions on what can be used?
Yeah, that was part of the conditions upon the transfer to the city. And now we can go and submit proposals to change that. But there we're trying to stay in line with the conditions under which it was given to us, which are the broad term was recreational.
Recreational.
And museum, recreational museum.
We do have several cards to speak. So if there aren't any additional questions, Mr. Whitaker.
Two quick questions. On the last study, one of the previous study sessions, we discussed putting Mesa Plays on its own ballot measure. Are we still considering doing that, or is that going to be rolled up into the park ballot measure into seeing the line item?
So, Mayor, Council, it was a great question. We've been in discussions with Mesa Plays about the possibility of kind of doing a hybrid of that. And we would present that. I think we have some more discussions with them about possibly funding the thirty million dollars related to the tournament fields would not be funded by general obligation bonds. They would be funded by the revenues generated by the bed tax and sales taxes to support that. But I we'd like to come back and present that in a little more detail, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
I guess it's kind of a hybrid. We would keep the twenty-five field or sorry, twenty-five million that's related just to community fields that the community can always have access would have access to during the week would be in the general obligation bond. But the next go to the next slide, the slide.
Behind it, I think.
Oh, I'm looking that one. But those fields could be funded separately outside of the geo bond. But we'll talk about that in a couple of weeks, if that would be okay.
Yeah, that's fine. And the other question is related. I also noticed that the total amount was like two hundred million dollars between public safety and parks bond. Will those be separated? Or are you presenting that as well as a ballot?
No, it's just intended to show you the total, but they would be separate questions on the ballot.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Not to cut off debate because we can continue to have these council questions, but let's go ahead and hear from those who've pulled the cards, and then we'll continue the conversation. First is Joe Martin. Welcome, Joe.
My name is Joe Martin, and I'm in District Six. And today I'm representing as Vice Chair of the Mesa Parks and Recs and also as the Chair of the Subcommittee of Imagine Mesa Plays from the Imagine Mesa Initiative. The first thing is is that I'm here to say that we support the Parks and Cultural Bond proposal. This proposal specifically addresses in the Parks and Recreation Strategic 2018-22 Plan. It hits on three of the four main goals of the strategic plan, which is delivering the highest quality services and experiences to our citizens, balancing needs and wants with a stabilize the bottom line to stabilize the bottom line, and advocating and leveraging our community relationships. So I think in 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 this aspect with Parks and Recs, it fits right and according to what we've just done, this huge strategic plan for the direction of the Parks and Recs Department. This bond also supports the Imagine Mesa at Play recommendations of a multipurpose, multi-filled youth and amateur sports complex, the expansion of the bike and pedestrian trail program, and increased park features and the continuation of the 2012 bond. That was the continuation of the 2012 park bond. I just want to thank staff for their thoughtful consideration of the community's input and developing the Parks and Cultural Bond. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Thanks for your service. David Weir. Do you want to speak, Dave?
I'm in support.
Okay, got it. Thanks. Thanks for your for being here, Dave. So David is here just saying in support of the the bond question going forward. Thank you. Matt Erickson.
Good morning. I'm Matt Erickson. I am currently the Chair for the Parks and Board Advisory Council. I also serve as a volunteer coach, as a parent, as a volunteer for the Adaptive Arts Program, Adaptive Program for the City of Mesa. So I see firsthand the need for space. Being a flag football coach, I am out there twice a week fighting for space, pushing people off or working with them to find it. So I support this. I come here from the Midwest six years ago, and I was not my family was not an active family at all. We sat at home, we sat inside. Moving out here, we've become an active family. And when I joined the Parks Board, I had no idea the park system that was in place. I sat there with Mark, and I was just in awe. And to see that we still need growth, we still need more room, and being able to be part of that and show that and kind of pushes forward has been cool. My son chooses to be outside more than he does electronics, which I know is shocking. But he chooses it, and his friends are out there all the time. So to give them more space, to give them fields. We just did baseball. I know we were fighting for baseball space and football space. So to be able to support that. This bond supports the Imagine Mesa, which you just heard Joe talk about. So I'm in complete support of this. I look forward to watching this go forward, and I'm in complete support of this bond. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks for your service on the Parks Board.
Thank you.
Mike Hutchinson.
Mayor, just your supporting it.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Rich Adams.
Good morning, Mayor and Counsel. Richard Adams at fifteen thirty-six East Elmwood Circle in Mesa, and thank you for allowing me to address you in my billboard T-shirt this morning, rather informal. I grew up here, and for the last fifty-five years, I've lived in Mesa, raised my kids here, and tried to be involved in the community. I'm also Chairman of the Mesa Plays Association, and I'm here in support of Mesa Plays Youth and Amateur Sports Complex. And in full disclosure, also a member of the Visit Mesa Board and the Economic Development Advisory Board. As you know, there's a huge demand by Mesa families for new sports facilities in Mesa. Mesa currently has a shortage of 1,000 hours a week in fields. The need and demand is clear, as our citizens recently told us in Imagine Mesa. Not only will Mesa families be able to benefit from the easy access to these sports facilities we propose, but Mesa residents will also stand to benefit economically. We have a world-class destination marketing organization here in Mesa. It's called Visit Mesa. Given a facility like Mesa Plays, Mark Garcia and his team at Visit Mesa have proven that they can book tournaments year-round, bringing visitor dollars to Mesa. Yes, if we build it, they will come, and they will spend their dollars right here in Mesa. Allegiant Airlines sees the opportunity in sports tourism, as evidenced by their recent letter of support, along with other organizations like the Greater Phoenix Economic Council and many others. I support the projects and services outlined in today's overall presentation, such as those for Mesa Fire and Medical. Those are very important as well. I'd like to point out that Mesa Plays is unique, and that is the only project talked about in the proposal that will serve as an economic engine for Mesa. An economic impact study recently conducted by the well-respected Elliott Pollack and Associates found that investing in this sports complex would increase sales tax revenue for Mesa, thus helping to sustain essential services that residents need without burdening our community further. I'll not quote the specific economic impacts. Visit Mesa staff can provide that as well as city staff. I know you're familiar with them. They are impressive numbers. But I will say this as a fiscal conservative, if I were in the private sector and a CEO with this project, we'd be turning shovels already. I believe these numbers will work. But beyond the economics of it, Mesa Plays is an opportunity to invest in our youth and in quality of life and in the future. It is an opportunity to make a statement that Mesa is a leader in these areas. As good community stewards, it is an opportunity to leave Mesa better than we all found it. I believe that Mesa Plays Youth and Amateur Sports Complex is a game changer for Mesa's residents, and I like to encourage you to consider including and supporting it in this overall package. It isn't often, in my experience, that decisions are easy. We aren't often presented clear choices, but there is an exception to that on today's agenda. It is called Mesa Plays. It's the right thing to do, and I encourage you to support it. Take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Rich. Thanks for the multiple boards you serve on and have served on.
Thank you, Mayor.
Scott Higginson.
Mayor and Counsel, good morning again. This is the first time as a board member I've officially seen a number for the IDA museum to be included in the bond, and I certainly do appreciate that. But not wanting to bite the hand that feeds you, our first phase is looking at five million dollars. And we hope that as you go through the deliberations of money and funding and which projects and money to go where, that you might consider that to help us achieve our first phase, which is the expansion, the atrium, and having the areas in the museum that can help generate some revenues. I know Mr. Brady didn't intend it to sound this way, but we have an area downtown for interactive children, and that is the IDA museum. And we believe that some improvements to that building, which you also on, will allow us to further our goals and objectives. So in your discussions, just remember, we certainly would appreciate the 2.4 that was on the slide, but our first phase is hoping to have a five million dollar support in the bond.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Mark, you Mark Garcia indicated that you do you want to speak, Mark?
Hello, Mayor and Counsel. Good morning. I'm available to answer any questions that you have. I can't do better than Rich just did.
Well, you would have done a great job, but you're right. You couldn't have done better than Rich. Counsel, any additional questions for staff or Mr. Garcia on this item? Mr. Thompson.
I do have one. And this came to my attention a while back when we were having a conversation with some folks about soccer fields. And I think we need to do a better job of ensuring that Mesa residents are using the soccer fields. I know there's the one specifically in Riverview, I was told, were were being used by a lot of folks outside of Mesa, a lot of teams that were just coming in, requesting the fields, getting the fields. And we weren't really doing the the checks on the on the individual. So basically, our citizens are paying through their secondary property tax to build soccer fields and athletic fields that they can't even utilize because they're being taken over by people outside of Mesa. And so I know that there's that we have an ordinance or a code or something that speaks to this, but I think we need to do a better job of ensuring that that Mesa residents are put first and foremost in the use of the of the fields. And maybe that will also help eliminate some of the overcrowding in some of our fields.
So, Mayor, can Mr. Hershberg, you want to address that? I'm not haven't heard this before.
Well, he's doing he might address the thousand hours, I think, of unfilled commitments we have per week.
Yeah, Mayor, Counsel, good morning. Councilmember Thompson, we do do our best to check that. At Riverview in particular, I can tell you that the months of use that we do have, and I'll remind you that six months of that usage is down essentially for spring training and then allowing us to bring those fields back to a playable condition. There are four full-size regulation fields out there and two microfields essentially that can be used for practices and youth games. Our adult and youth sports programs are the primary users of that, along with Benedictine Soccer. There is a both men's and women's programs out there. There is a one field that is not even a consistent usage that is being utilized by Sereno, which just was a large merger. And Mark Garcia can give you more history on the mergers of these soccer clubs. They have reconfigured their organization, and we do ask them to verify and put their Mesa residents out there at all other sites. So I can that might be the one field which, again, is not a consistent usage and not that much of the year that they're out there. But at every other location, it is primarily Mesa residents that we're displacing or serving in either case. Counselmember Freeman addressed the thousand hours a week of time that we do not have available. And we've addressed this during our budget presentation, too. And we show a matrix where our numbers were going down, but we've shifted the the realignment of how we utilize our fields within the city and primarily with Mesa Public Schools and then booking and taking control of their space and scheduling those. So it's not an indication of the demand going down. It's a it's an indication of how we manage that space. And we are still turning groups away left and right. We just had a meeting with the city manager about a month and a half ago from a club that plays in southeast Mesa, the very extreme end of southeast Mesa, saying, we need at least two more fields, if not three lighted fields. Can you help us out? And the question back to them was, well, who do we displace? And where do we go with that group? Because we're that low on field space.
Thank you. Any additional questions for Mr. Garcia? I mean, Mr. Hershberg, excuse me.
Mark would be quick to answer, too. Thank you very much. I can say, I mean, I think all of us have an inbox full of emails from soccer coaches, little league coaches, Pop Warner coaches, little league commissioners. This is a very hot topic in our community. It's only going to get worse when we eliminate the fields out of Riverview for the commercial development that we've talked about. So there are lots of stories out there, people that feel like they're getting the short end of the stick in terms of the field use. And that's that's just the reality in Mesa, Arizona right now. Chris, oh, I'm sorry. We do have I like we thank you very much. We have several people that want to speak on this, so we'll we'll start in on that right now. First is going to be Gene Defoe.
I'm going away.
Okay. All right. Gene, so you don't want to speak on 2D?
No.
Okay. We then well, is so are we good? All right. Thank you, Mr. Defoe.
I noticed that one earlier, and so I was making sure we covered it.
Okay, thank you. We need the community to get engaged on this topic. This is a huge conversation that we need to have. Here's the what the bond what the ballot looks like right now in November. We have already committed to putting a quarter cent sales tax increase on for public safety. I think there's broad community support for the public safety bond that was just presented to us of eighty-six point eight million dollars. I spoke with Mesa Public Schools yesterday. They likely will be proposing, in addition to an override election, a three hundred million dollar bond for Mesa Public Schools. We have Home Rule, which is a critical issue on the ballot for the City of Mesa. If we proceed with the Parks Bond that we just talked about, that is potentially one hundred and thirty-eight million dollars. Tied to that bond would be two other questions, including raising the bed tax to to support the economic development part of this proposal and getting around a charter prohibition on spending a certain amount of money on a sports facility. So that's what the ballot would look like when folks walk in on in November. That is a very imposing potential ballot. And so the only way we can do that, if we're serious about doing this, it's got to be because there's broad community support. It's got to be because this council says, yes, we're going to go out and campaign for it, and it's because we're hearing from the people in this room and the people that are watching this broadcast telling us, we want this in our community. We're going to go out and campaign. We're going to work for it. We're going to vote for it. So we have the next so everything's on the table right now, and we just have to decide this council's going to have to prioritize and decide what's on the ballot, what's not on the ballot. So, Mr. Brady, talk to us about timing. You mentioned maybe a couple of weeks. I mean, the the drop dead date for putting things on the ballot is the first week or two of July. Am I correct?
July second, the July second council meeting.
July second is the is is the drop dead date that we have to if we're going to do this and to what extent we're going to do it, that's when we have to vote. So we have the month of June to have this great community discussion about what our priorities are and what we want to put on the ballot. And not only that, what we're willing to go out and work for and raise money for and put yard signs out for and do everything that's necessary to win an election for. So, Mr. Brady, I know we this is up to us, but potentially looking at the month of June, we have, you know, maybe the middle of June is when we'd come back and have this.
And come back with kind of a final draft for a council. Not you wouldn't be approving it, but it'd give us what we would then put together to put prepare for the July second council meeting. So that's what we anticipate doing.
So probably June fourteenth, June twenty-first, those are the the study sessions that that we will be making this decision, deciding what's going to go on the probably the the July second or the.
Or it could be the week before that. We could do it in.
On the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, we could do it July. Yeah, instead of waiting till the very last day. We might want to give yourself a little.
Right.
So we could shoot for the June twenty. Is the twenty-fifth a council meeting? No, it's the eighteenth, isn't it?
I think it's the eighteenth.
So that may be two sounds. So we're going to probably have to shoot unless we do a special council meeting. But let's let's anticipate we would come back to the council the middle of June in a study session with that final list. And what I'm hearing is, I mean, let me just kind of the assumptions we've tried to work under is trying to get this as close to 200 billion or below, which comes out to being approximately, and I'll have to go back, and we'll come back in two weeks. So it's a plus or minus about the impact would be about forty dollars a year for the average homeowner, and that's what that would represent.
approximately, and I'll have to go back, and we'll come back in two weeks, so it's a plus or minus about, the impact would be about $40 a year for the average homeowner, and that's what that would represent. I believe I'm close in the number there. And then I heard maybe some interest in maybe looking for some additional dollars for the Idea Museum for their Phase One.
So just for me to summarize what you just said, if, if we have a total of $200 million in bond debt, and additional bond debt, including the 86.8 that we just talked about for public safety, so that means we'd whittle down the parks and culture from the presentation we just saw, so that the total is 200 million, that's, that's roughly it, we're asking the voters of Mesa to add an additional $40 a year of secondary property tax?
Correct.
Okay. So that's, that's out there for, for us to chew on and consider?
Yeah. It may be a little bit more than, I think it may be $42, I'm not sure, I think I'm in the ballpark, so.
Okay.
Get quoted here, so.
All right, so we're not going to make those decisions today. It was, this was a great meeting to, to get the presentation on all of these topics, but the, you know, the conversation begins now. So if, if you're passionate about this, if you saw something on the, the screen during the course of this meeting that you care deeply about, you need to talk to council, you need to talk to your fringe, you need to talk, or if you, if what you just saw makes you mad as heck and you're going to campaign against it, we need to know that now, too, because we, we want to take the, the temperature of the community and see what the level of support is for the things we talked about. Counsel, anything else to say on this topic? All right, thank you. There's been a tremendous amount of work put in by the community and by the city staff to get us to this point. Thank you to everyone who's, who's been involved in that. Thank you for everyone who came today to, to share your opinions. We will now go back to the beginning of our agenda, frankly, and go to Agenda Item 2A, which is to hear a presentation and provide direction on garage size standards for single residence garages. Mr. Wesley, good to have you with us.
Yes, Mayor, as I'm pulling this up, just interesting kind of scope of issues that you get to deal with here in this agenda today. Makes it interesting for you, I'm sure. So yes, we're back again to talk about the garage sizes. As you know, you have a case on your agenda next Monday for modification to PAD for what's known as Heritage Crossing, and that's prompted this discussion. In our discussion today, we're going to talk about two things. One is the specific application and some additional background information with regard to their requests, but we also want to start the discussion of how we might look at these in the future, and how staff can respond maybe with applications as they come in, and how we might be able to develop some options in the future that allow us to look at a variety of garage sizes. So just to set the stage again, why we care about garage sizes, they do have some impact on public safety. If garage sizes aren't big enough and people are having to park out in the street, it starts to affect, affect the ability for public safety vehicles to get down the street, for solid waste vehicles to get around and do their job. And so it is important that we consider those garage sizes, make sure they are usable as best we can. We still can't control people's individual choices for what they do with that garage, but we want to do the best job we can to, to try to have meaningful and viable parking spaces for vehicles. They do affect, it's one element of things that affect the long-term viability of a home and a neighborhood, goes in that total mix of things. And also we've seen the propensity of having water heaters and sometimes the solid waste containers go into garages, so we want to make sure we're providing for those as necessary. And as we get into the smaller lot developments, we've seen more of those lately, and so we've been working to really understand those impacts and what some of those design standards should be recently. We, we feel like the garage becomes even more important in those cases, because with those smaller lots, we're often seeing shorter driveways. We're seeing less than frontage on the lot to have a place for somebody to park in the street in front of their own property, and the reduced storage capabilities both on the lot and within the home, because things are reduced in size. So again, with this specific request, Heritage Crossing on the north side of Baseline, right where the 202 and 60 meet there, and it has two components, the southern portion, they call it traditional lots, they've got the larger lot sizes, more traditional home sizes. As we continue to work through this process with applicant, we've both come to learn that there are really very few exceptions to the garage sizes in the traditional lot, so we're really not concerned about the minor changes on the traditional lots, the southern portion of the property. And it's really the northern portion where we still have a little bit of concern about the impact of the garage sizes and what it might do to the developments. That's really where we're focusing the discussion, is on the courtyard and cottage homes. So again, one of the issues with these developments generally is where do guests park? In this case, we, guideline that we've been using is that we have at least one guest space per dwelling unit. This plan shows 121 lots and 135 guest parking spaces. So they've met that basic standard that we have. In discussions, as we continue to evaluate the details of the plan, it looks like some of those on-street parking spaces may go away in the, in the final development, but they're still above the one space per dwelling unit. We've been able to determine that much, and so we're comfortable with that. They're also providing city standard streets along that loop road on the outside, and so we have, again, evaluated, those street sizes do allow for parking on both sides and provide for solid waste and emergency vehicles. Yes, Mayor?
John, a question, the, and I, this is a little awkward, because we're talking about a specific zoning case, and I'm not sure that's entirely appropriate for us to have a hearing, and, you know, other than the hearing that we're going to have on Monday on that. So I guess we're kind of using this plan, this is what's provoked this conversation, though.
Oh, yeah.
And so, and I, and I know that, that the applicant is represented in the room, so nothing, and we're not doing this behind anyone's back or anything, but I, so not in the context of how we're going to vote on Monday, but still. One of the questions that has been raised, that, that you prefaced this conversation with, is the concern about what happens on garbage day, where you have small streets, narrow lots, small frontage homes, and the garbage, and you've got a baby shower going on, and so five, 10 people show up, five, 10 cars are now in front of a, one of these small houses. I know there's dedicated spaces for the solid waste barrels, right? Can you, and, and that's different, or that's separate from the, the street frontage?
Mayor, I'm not sure how well this will show up. I didn't include a specific illustration of that, but if you can see where the cursor is on the, the street here, this is where they've set aside areas for the solid waste containers, they're separate from the parking. So on those solid waste days, they'll be able to put those barrels out, but they still have the parking spaces available, and they will be clearly marked. We've been working with developers on these and developed some standards for how those get marked to ensure that, you know, people don't park where they're not supposed to on those solid waste days.
So is that located out on a larger, wider street?
Yes, Mayor, this loop road around the outside is a city standard street. It will be a public street, and will have the, the width of a typical city street.
So the plan is, if I live on one of the interior lots, I'm going to walk my garbage can out to the larger street and put it in its stall some distance from my home?
Mayor, the plan that's being worked out is that these houses closer to the edge are the ones that will come out to the street. Along these alleyways, the interior units will have space in the middle where they'll put their garbage containers.
Okay.
So there'll be both, so there will be, the solid waste vehicles will be going down these alleys, but it'll just be picking up in the middle. So nobody has to go that far with their, with their garbage can.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry.
That's fine. That's what, make sure you, you understand those. So again, because of the city standard street on the outside, we're not anticipating any of the public safety problems or issues with this. Focusing a little bit closer then on the individual lots, these show you what are available for storage and parking. They are proposing just five-foot deep driveways off the alley into the units, and so there will not be room for parking on those. Each lot will have a 10-foot side yard, and it's in those 10-foot side yards that they plan to then store their solid waste barrels. There's not a lot of other room then on the lots for other kinds of storage.
Okay, I'm sorry, another question. So the, the five-foot driveways, that does not violate our design standards? It's the, the width of the garages that is the problem?
Correct. The width or depth? Again, we have a set standard of a 20-foot wide, 22-foot deep is the minimum. In this case, as we'll see on the next slide, they are proposing a 21-foot wide but only 20-foot deep, and so it's that depth that doesn't meet the code in this case.
Okay. Because the five-foot driveway seems problematic to me, because like you say, it pretty much eliminates parking in the driveway as an option.
Correct.
And so you're either parking in your garage, assuming you're the type of family that doesn't fill your garage or something other than cars, so you'd have to, the parking would be there in front of the house, which is a very narrow lot, or in the garage, or around the corner at some dedicated parking spaces.
Yes, Mayor, it's either in the garage or it'll be out in these spaces along this public street.
Okay.
Because there would not be any room to park in the alleys, and the actual front of a home is this common courtyard space, grass space, no vehicles there.
And we're building neighborhoods like this already. The, the only, the exception here is that these folks would like to shrink in the, the width of their, I'm sorry, the depth of their garage.
In this case, it's the depth.
Literally a couple of inches.
Feet, a couple of feet.
I'm sorry, excuse me, a couple of feet. Okay, sorry, please continue.
So you can see in the illustration of the floor plans, their proposal here of how that does accommodate some of the larger vehicles, do fit in, in that depth. It's the, the staff concern, the reason for the depth has been, we often see, such as the water heater, some other storage that happens, it starts to make it difficult to actually get around the vehicle and access, get things in and out, is, is why we've set the larger standard. But these floor plans, you, you can see, you know, they do have other options in here for some storage opportunities. And this chart was in the original case and materials you saw before. Again, we're focused just over here on the last column with the courtyard and alley homes. Overall, because they've got wider garages, there's very little change in the actual area in the garage, it's only 13 foot, square feet smaller than the standard garage. So while staff has had some concerns with this, the Planning and Zoning Board has recommended approval of this proposed change, and that's what's before you for Monday evening on those. And then, just in terms of the general comment moving forward into the future, what staff's going to be doing, is as these different small lot projects come through, we're going to be a little bit more intentional upfront when they come in at the pre-submitting meeting, and making sure people understand the different design standards and constraints that they'll have to meet as they go forward. We have not always required the product to be provided with the application. When it does come in as a formal application, we're going to start requiring that upfront, so we can, again, avoid these problems down the road, and we can see those details earlier on in the process. Then, as suggested by Councilmember Thompson's last meeting, we're also looking at some of the options of things we can have for trade-offs. If you do want to make that garage a little bit smaller, what are some of the things we need in replacement for that? So what is the builder providing in terms of other places for storage or shelving in the home, in the garage, in the yard? You know, where are they placing the water meters and the, the barrels? One of the floor plans we saw showed a little niche for the water heater outside of that, that standard area, so are they doing some of those things that, that help make the garage usable? What is the length of the driveway, is it parkable or not? And if it's not, you know, where is that guest parking and how available is it for use, and what's the amount of it? And that overall design in terms of the width, the depth, and how are those working together? You may not be meeting our depth, but you got it extra wide and, and, or whatever, the other way around, you know, may work, and so we can look at those specific design elements. So those are, are things we'll be working on in the future. For now, because we don't have them adopted, it'd still be a PAD modification to change the design standard. We hope to get those in place, so we can do something more administrative with those in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Wesley. Counsel, questions for Mr. Wesley? Jeremy, just to clarify, staff's recommendation is still for denial?
Staff has gotten more comfortable with this as we've gone on. That was a recommendation we did make to the P&amp;Z board. We're down to fairly minor difference really overall, and we've gained some additional information, so, so we're more comfortable with it than we were before. And again, P&amp;Z board has recommended approval.
At the time when it was front P&amp;Z, when it was in front of P&amp;Z, when our recommendation was being considered, we were not comfortable at the time to recommend for it. But I think after the dialogues and the effort that's been put forth to try to come up with a solution, John, would you agree that we're, we're close enough that we think we're, we're there? We, we recognize that we, early on in the process, we did not have all of the specific dimensions. Our process didn't require that. That became problematic later on in the process when we realized there was a, this was different than what we were expecting. But that made it difficult for staff, it also made it difficult for the developer, because they made all, several assumptions along the way. But I think both sides have tried to accommodate, to get close to the number of parking spaces we need. But lessons learned, that's why John then proposed that going forward, we're going to require that specific detailed dimensional information on the front end. Right now, when we see some plans, it's just, how would you describe, a generic box that doesn't necessarily have the dimensions in it. So we're going to request that upfront, so try to avoid getting this far in the process and realizing we're short.
Thanks, John. Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, John, for getting out in front of this. I know we both recently met with a developer up in my area, and I was concerned about the zero driveway, and I don't remember the width of the garage, because I don't think we discussed that, but getting that out in front in the pre-submitting process, that information in the staff is critical. I recently attended an open house in one of the newer neighborhoods in my district, and they did have driveways, they did have larger garages, yet the whole street was packed. And, you know, not that I don't mind walking, but, you know, it was just to accommodate friends and family for an open house, it was difficult. So, and all they had was on-street parking. They didn't have any off-site parking around the neighborhood. So I appreciate that, and I support you, the wider garage widths moving forward.
Okay, so just so we're clear, that, that this is agendaized, saying to provide direction. I think the direction that you're requesting is that we're going to keep the standards the way they are. On the specific zoning case that we're voting on on Monday, we're saying we're going to do a one-off, sorry, we're going to, this, this one got biased, it's too late for us to do anything about it, and, and the, the developer has been very accommodating and other things to, to minimize the impact of, of this situation. So staff is now recommending approval of that, but you're not recommending that as a rule, we, we change our guidelines?
I think we were careful, we don't want to set this as the, we can continue doing this, and so I think that's what our caution was. Is that fair, John?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we'll just do a better job of making sure people walk in with their numbers from the beginning, rather than just a bunch of boxes, and we all assume that the math works, right?
Fair enough.
Okay. Well, thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Chris, will we then put this back on the agenda Monday?
I think it's --
Is it, is it on there?
Yes, the question is, we're going to put on consent versus being --
Oh, yeah, the question is to council if you want to put on consent for approval. Yes, it is, it, it was off consent, I think, is what we showed it, that's right, yeah.
All right, I was the one, I, I've had family members that have lived in cluster neighborhoods before, and, and when, when somebody comes over as a visitor, it's a neighborhood event, because that means you have to coordinate, get people getting in and out of side streets and garages, and so I'm not a, to me, this seems like a very urban environment that we're creating in a suburban environment. And I mean, if this was next to a light rail station and people, anyway, I'm sorry, I'm, I'll, I'll get off. Yes, I'm, I'm okay with, I'm okay with putting this on the consent agenda, and so, and I know that we had made arrangements to go out and look at neighborhoods, and we can probably go ahead and cancel that, because if, if staff's good with it now, and we'll just all do a better job --
Do a better job from the next round.
-- of making sure numbers are communicated, then, then it sounds like, is there anybody that council wants to have this off, that, that zoning case off the consent agenda on Monday?
I've got one last question. So, to clarify, we're specifically approving this process because it's too late in the process, but moving forward, if something similar to this came before the P&amp;Z board or council, it would not be approved, because the garages would still be too small.
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, until we would adopt any different standards, any changes would still require approval through the PAD process, it would require P&amp;Z recommendation and council action. But as we work on some of these alternatives that we just talked about, hopefully we can have things in place that we can be negotiating with the applicant upfront on those trade-offs, and so that we could come through with support for the deviations.
So Counsel, the point would be, this conversation about these widths and the specific dimensions, would happen well before we ever had it, we would never, we would avoid going to P&amp;Z or coming to council. The idea is we would create these alternatives that John mentioned at the end and find solutions before we had to ask for these zoning exceptions. That's our goal.
Okay, thanks again, John.
And if I can add, John, and talk about this case specifically, they've done some of these alternatives already, the niche for the water heater, the additional parking, so some of the things that you've mentioned, they flipped the dimensions of the garage according to your recommendation, so they've done some of these things to make you feel more comfortable now of, that were, that came later in the process. So they've met some of these things already.
Yes, we just didn't say, I mean, there was some give and take on both sides.
So that this neighborhood is not going to be noticeably different from other neighborhoods. It's literally a couple of feet, but we've made some, some, done some things to mitigate that in the final plots, is that correct?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. All right, so let's put it back on the consent agenda and let's let our guests know that we, our hosts know we don't need a tour of the neighborhood later today. Okay. Thank you very much, John. Anything else from you?
Okay.
Okay, thank you, council. The next item on our agenda is item 2B. That's to hear a presentation and provide direction on a long-term lease with the Arizona Board of Regents and related budget for the multi-story building to be leased for the downtown Arizona State University project. Mr. McVeigh, welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Jeff McVeigh, manager of Downtown Transformation. I'm back again to give you one more update on our progress with the ASU project. I'm going to start with the lease. We've been negotiating with ASU for the past several weeks to try and get that to final form. We're very close. I think Mr. Smith would call it the painfully close portion of it, where we're only dealing with really the legal ease. All the business points are dealt with, sorry, Jim. All the business points are addressed, and we're just working on some final language tweaks. So to summarize what that lease agreement includes, again, is still a 99-year ground lease. It would be with a rent of $100,000 a year from ASU. Currently, that would require the city to design and construct what is a 118,000-square-foot building, five stories, as well as the first phase of the city center park, which is a two- to three-acre public park, and a first phase of Innovation Studios, which is around six to 12,000 square feet renovation of the city's IT building. ASU would have responsibilities for doing all the furniture fixtures and equipment, which is estimated currently at around $10 million, as well as providing all of the operations and maintenance costs ongoing, which is currently estimated at $1.3 million a year for that building. They will commit to 750 students and 40 faculty and staff at the site within the first five years of opening or starting operations. And we have gotten agreement on the provision of 25 scholarships annually to Mesa students, Mesa High School students that attend either Mesa, Gilbert, or Queen Creek School. We have also dealt with the net revenue sharing from the commercial tenant lease of the first floor. There is approximately 1,500 square foot café space included in the building that ASU will manage, and then the city will be, will receive the net revenue proceeds from the lease of that space. We believe that we'll have the lease finalized by the end of this week, either today or tomorrow, and that we will have it available for council for decision and action on June Next, I'm going to give an update on the master plan, where we've got, where we are. Our designers are working, are very busy in getting us to the final master plan. This is an update from what you've already seen. What's shown here is the area of the first phase of what is included in the city center in the lease. This is a rendering of the layout of the park, which includes the two-acre park with a water feature near Main Street, provides a nice walkway in connection to the ASU building, which footprint you see there. It's a larger footprint than we have had, have seen before to accommodate the square footage, as well as some landscaping improvements around the IT building to improve the streetscape for the Innovation Studios. This is taking a look at it, full buildout. Down the road, as we continue to build out the city center park, it provides, this shows provision of additional space for future private development as well as potential future ASU buildings. I'm just looking at it one indifferent way, trying to take a look at it in context on the current aerial, so that this is just showing the first floor footprint of the building as well as overhangs of the upper floor. So the orange space is the actual footprint, and the light black outline that extends on the west side is a large overhang from the second floor. Given a different perspective, this is trying to show it in context with massing and scale so that you can see what five stories, 118,000 square feet looks like in relationship to the existing buildings on the site. The one thing I, again, want to make clear is that this was not an effort for architectural design. This was an effort to develop programming and building square footages so that we could actually create the building estimates, the cost estimates. Should we move forward, there will be a separate procurement for final architectural design engineering for this building. So this take, one more look at the first floor. This is just, just to highlight that we continue to refine the programming of the building's square footage. We have probably gone through multiple iterations of layouts for, or programming for square footage of different spaces within the building. We've gotten to the point where both ASU and the city are comfortable with the, with the space dimensions of the programming, as well as what that means for the budget, which is currently, our estimate that we received yesterday, our final estimate that we received yesterday, gave us a budget for the ASU building of $63.5 million. It's important to note that that budget includes all of our soft costs, all engineering, architectural costs. It also includes a five, or 8% design contingency, a 5% construction contingency. And given our current construction climate, it also includes a 7% contingency for construction cost escalations. We are also continuing to work on what we are calling the city center project elements. As I mentioned with the description of the lease, the city is obligated, still obligated to deliver the two-acre city center, first phase of the city center park, as well as the first phase of Innovation Studios, and then associated infrastructure that will support all of the, all of the development on the site. We are currently continuing to do design and programming for those project elements, and we'll continue to bring those forward to council as they are finalized. Elements such as the Innovation Studio, we have interest from other potential tenants. And part of our design and programming is to be able to work with those tenants and understand what their needs, space needs are before we actually come up with a final design and budget for, for those build outs. That, I tried to keep it short and concise. I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Council, questions for Mr. McVeigh? Yes, Mr. Freeman. What's the timing of all this?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, should council approve the, approve the lease and project budget on Monday, our staff will probably move almost immediately to release an RFP for the final design services. Our expectation is final design will take somewhere around a year, and then we'll go into construction, go into construction, and we anticipate that construction will take somewhere around, I believe, 15 months. So we're looking at opening classes in the fall of 2021. Mr. Namark, am I right on that one?
Yes.
Thank you.
We do have several requests to speak, so let's jump into those. First is Mr. Gene Dufoe. Come on up, Gene.
I'm Gene Dufoe. I live at 510 East Ingram Street in Mesa. And I am still confused and irritated to some degree with the decision to move forward on this ASU project. I am a little bit disappointed in how fast this is moving. I would like to see this submitted to the voters because we have denied the approval of this project in November of 2016. And that concludes my statement to you.
Thank you, Gene. Next is Christopher. And Christopher, I know I do it wrong every time, so we're going to get this right, okay? It's not, is it Bound or is it...
Bound.
Bound, okay, great, I'm getting better. Welcome, Christopher.
Councilmembers have admonished, have been admonished for making proposals that would bind the future councils to their decisions. Yet today, we are listening to the council discuss the merits of a plan that would not only bind the council, but also the people of Mesa for 99 years, as well as obligate the city to $120 million in debt. How can we be responsible for, how can this be responsible but a proposal to balance the budget before moving forward with additional expenditures not be okay? Also, I would like to clarify the clarification that you, Mayor, gave earlier this month. You stated that question one had more to do with than just ASU, and that the question one's failure isn't a mandate by the residents feeling that the city's subsidizing of ASU moved to downtown Mesa. You did not feel that that was a mandate. However, when you look at all the videos taped, commentary given, ad material produced, and other issues, any other issues are barely visible. Case in point, we are Mesa, your public-facing organization, created a two-minute video full of amazing graphics, narrated endorsements, fantastic future developments, and one second was allocated to public safety on the question. One second. Maybe this new proposal is a good idea, but it's not your place to lock the council or our city into a 99-year lease. I feel it's a good idea. I feel, if you feel it's a good idea, sell it to the people. That's the role of the council. You had actually said that earlier in another presentation, that you want the council to get out there and sell it to the people. That's exactly what should be done, and this question should go to the people because it is the people's right to decide on this. I think you need to stop and remember, this is not your plan. This is Mesa's plan. This is not your future. It's Mesa's future. This is not your money. It is Mesa's money. Mayor and council members, I implore you to remember your fiduciary responsibility, your mandate from question one, and your ethics when you vote on this issue. Mesa is watching. How, I'll end it there, but thank you for your time, and I'm willing to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bound.
Thank you.
Got it. All right. And here's my next problem. David?
Yeah.
Thank you, David. Welcome, Mr. Douthat.
So far. Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is David Douthat. I live at 623 South Winthrop, and I am deeply disturbed because I got drug into this without any knowledge because you guys decided to go ahead and do this, and now we're going to be stuck with a, with a project, which may or may not be good, but so far, a lot of it is blue sky, and it's resulting in increasing levels of debt. From listening to earlier presentations, if I'm not mistaken, when you add up all the revenue bonds and the general obligation bonds and everything else, we might be pushing close to $2 billion in debt by the end of this next year, by this time next year. And at 3% interest, that's $60 million a year, just in interest on that. Now, I am not particularly happy with the idea that you're building something down here because of primarily speculators who bought up a whole bunch of property in downtown Mesa after the bond failure, and I think they swooped in and figured they got a lot of people selling out because it was cheap. And now we have a consortium led by our esteemed Senator Bob Worsley, along with several other gentlemen who purchased about $20 million worth of property, who want to make a return on this money at our expense. I don't mind people gambling. I don't mind people taking chances. I don't mind blue sky, but not on my money, please. I wasn't invited to this party at the beginning, and I am not happy with the fact that I have now been drug into it at this late date. Whether or not it works, and I have severe reservations about this because I believe we're heading into a severe, severe recession here in the next couple of years, and we may have just bought ourselves another white elephant. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Douthat. Clint Hardison.
Council, thank you for having me here today. I just wanted to come and voice my support for the ASU project in downtown Mesa. I, and a lot of people that I speak with specifically of my generation, see huge upside in this investment that Mesa would be making. I'm born and raised in Mesa. I live just north of here in the Evergreen Historic District. The opportunity that this is for our city to really make ourselves competitive with other cities over the course of generations is immense. It's been really disappointing for me to see so many of the people that I graduated with relocate from Mesa to Gilbert, to Chandler, and to Tempe. And when you ask them why they do that, they mention specifically that Mesa appears run down, that Mesa doesn't have the amenities that these other cities and towns do, that Mesa doesn't have the same economic prospects that some of these other cities and towns do. I'm in commercial real estate. I know how commercial real estate developers think. I know what conditions need to occur for commercial real estate investors to invest hundreds of millions of dollars, the types of investments that truly transform areas. I'm very confident that this investment by the city will pay off for the city. My understanding is, not just in the blue sky way that was referenced, but in the direct revenue that can be associated with this investment. If the debt service is X, then the direct revenue associated with that is X plus some significant percent. To me, that indicates very clearly this does pencil. But that's not the real benefit of this. The real benefit is the downstream projects that will occur as a result of ASU's investment. ASU has a track record. When they've come and invested in the area, it says very clearly to developers who are waiting on the sidelines that significant investments that they're considering are wise and prudent investments. And those are the type of investments that we, as Mesa, need in order to retain the people that have grown up here, in order to attract new people here, and in order to create a strong local economy that will make Mesa more competitive in the next generation and so on and so forth, rather than less competitive. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak here this day, and I urge the council to support this on behalf of me and so many people of my generation and others that I know who really believe that as Masons, we need to invest in order to ensure that our town or our city is the best that it could be. Thank you.
Thank you, Clint. Angel Levine.
I'm not a numbers person. Mr. Whitaker is very good at numbers. And so I'm going to plead with you from my heart today, guys. You're very ambitious, watching all the presentations here today. We have a lot coming towards us for Mesa residents, and I don't feel ASU is one of them. ASU, let's just put it simple. There's a right and a wrong. And I know your mamas all taught you that, and even if most of you probably have that spiritual backing that tells you that bad feeling in the pit of your stomach, that's what I have on this deal. A city full of your constituents believe this is a bad deal, yet you're willing to gamble with our futures. This will tarnish ASU, and it will tarnish your reputations. Remember who you represent, the majority, not a few. Our political world has changed, and in 2016 through today, you have seen that. If you're willing to gamble, let this day and these discussions haunt your careers and your consciences. I pray that you listen to the voice of wisdom, and I ask that you honestly and wholeheartedly weigh this project. Pray about it. Ask if it's best for all or just some. I hope ASU and President Crow do the same. You can spin the numbers any way you want, but the bottom line, it comes from the pockets of single-income parents already trying to make ends meet, the elderly that are already on a fixed income, and ASU does have options. Mesa residents don't have many. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Angel. Earl Farnsworth.
It's been very enlightening today to listen to what, at the conclusion of the day, might indicate a real contradiction in your philosophy and principles, Mayor and councilman. indicate a real contradiction in your philosophy and principles, Mayor and Councilman. I've heard today, and all of us have, and certainly it's recorded, that we're giving away Mesa in this process of giving ASU a piece of property, which is what ends up happening, that will dilute the tax base, both from a commercial standpoint eventually, it takes and robs the citizens of Mesa of the actual value of the property itself. It could be sold, it doesn't have to be used in a educational or a government entity project, it can be sold to developer that will benefit the residents of Mesa forever and ever from the tax base. To remove this property completely from the tax rolls is a stealing from the citizens in their school district. There will not be that property to gather to help the city of Mesa and its student population pass the bonds necessary for good education. This is not just a $120 million project. You're losing the value of the land, the value of all the tax base that could eventually come from that property for 99 years. It was said, appreciated, you've forgotten the demographics of Mesa. This is a largely retired community, living on fixed incomes. We don't have the pocketbook that our neighbors have. Why aren't our plans consistent with the residents of Mesa themselves? It's been said that these different issues will go to the voters in separate bond issues. This came in a bond issue in 2016, coupled with public safety and this project specifically ASU. It was turned down. The council has now voted for a tax increase to fund public safety, putting that before the voters. Yet you sat here today and refuse to put this project on the ballot again for the voters, where you had so much confidence in 2016. I'm not sure what you're hiding, but something will happen and it will come out. This is not a program for regular college students, this has been addressed as a graduate program. Where will there be 25 residents of Mesa getting graduate programs here? I doubt that.
Mr. Farnsworth, your time is up, if you could just kind of wrap it up for us.
Thank you. I'm not in favor of this project, I'm not against ASU, I'm not against higher education, but this project needs to go to the voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farnsworth.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. You're probably wondering why I came to speak twice. My son's down in Guimas right now as part of Mesa's Sister Cities program. He met with their mayor yesterday, and I'm just trying to one-up him by coming before If you look really carefully, you can see that I'm growing a beard. I have scout camp next week, and I'm sick and tired of not being taken seriously, of being confused for one of the 12-year-old scouts that I lead up down there. I'm also a little sick and tired of Mesa not being taken seriously. As you look around, you see that Scottsdale and Tempe and Gilbert have all grown big, thick beards, and it's not any, there's no question as to what they're doing in their downtowns. So I challenge us not to shave downtown off too soon, just as it's getting growing. A little bit about ASU and this program that's coming in here. My little brother Jacob, I referenced him a little earlier, he wasted his entire childhood playing video games, and it's my parents' fault for putting the Nintendo in the basement, where anyone could sneak down past bedtime and play all night long. He went to USC's video game school, that was started by Steven Spielberg and other visionaries, and got a degree in video games, and I said, "Look, Jacob, you have just justified your entire childhood by becoming a video game designer." Jacob worked on Titanfall, I said earlier, he also worked on Skylanders, which you or your grandchildren or great-grandchildren might play.
Well, your time is really running out.
I know, I know. I'm draining this thing down, I got a minute and a half, okay. But not only did he, not only did he do that, that degree let him do the user interface for the BMW, which let him get a better car than mine, it was a BMW 328i, and later, an X3, why, I just drove the Prius. He also worked on Ollie, the Local Motors Autonomous Bus. He had offers from Lockheed and Orbital and other things to work with them. This kind of degree that they're bringing here are the degrees of the future. That's what we need to incubate in downtown. I think we would all prefer that ASU pay for the building itself, or that we find another method of funding, but if this is the price to pay, if this is the bargain we have to do, I think we should bring ASU downtown. I think this is well worth the investment for the future. As we, a while back, Mesa courted Amazon, where they were looking for a new headquarters, and I thought to myself, I don't think Mesa has a chance now, but there are some things we could do now, where the Amazon, 30 years from now, looks at Mesa and says, yes, this is exactly the place we want to be. And I hope that these sorts of moves, bringing ASU, bringing the future of technology and the future of education to our downtown, are the kinds of things that would make us very attractive to whoever the company that defeats Amazon and becomes the next giant one does. Just a reminder, please don't shave downtown off too quickly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, everyone here, everyone watching on TV, I'd like to clarify something today. My name is Sean Huntington, I live about two minutes from here. I, along with a group of friends, created a Facebook account, We Are Mesa. It is not some cohort designed by the mayor to influence anyone beyond myself and my friends' desire to see a change and new growth in Mesa. The group of friends that I've mentioned, all are residents of Mesa, all own businesses, work very hard to build community through not only their businesses, but in the things that they do after hours. Community is a large part of my business and what I do, and bringing community together is really the focus of why we created the page, We Are Mesa, as a way to create a video that I produced, I'm a videographer. It was not the mayor that produced this video, it was not any members of the council. I used my skills, my knowledge, my desire to see an improved Mesa, and I believe that this ASU project is exactly that. It is a project that will help build community, as it has done for downtown Phoenix. There's a community of thriving businesses, students, individuals, and people that are living and experiencing Phoenix in a way that has never been experienced before, and that's what I believe and hope that Mesa can also accomplish. The investments and the dollars and everything that goes into it are definitely a factor. But really, if we look at the economic impact as a driver for community, I believe that this ASU project is a catalyst for exactly that, that my business will maintain in Mesa, that my friends' businesses, that all the people that I've talked to about this project and are excited that Mesa is investing in our future, that that is really what's on the table here. And this project, if there was a better project, I would have made videos for that project. But this is what I believe is the project that will do exactly that. And so I invite you to listen to the people of Mesa, and to listen to the future of Mesa, and think about the community that will be built because of investment in our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Those are all the cards that I have, is there anyone else that wishes to be heard on this item? Okay, this is not an action item, although we do have an agenda item on Monday that will be a vote tied to this. Counsel, any other consideration? Mr. Thompson?
I just want to let everyone know that, you know, I don't disagree with anything that was said today, either pro or con. I have nothing against ASU. I think this project could be transformative for our downtown, I think it would be a good thing for our citizens, but what I disagree with philosophically is the way this is being done. You know, this went out to the voters on question one in 2016. 53%, which is roughly, what, 260, 270,000 people, said no. I'm just guessing, 485,000.
You've got to go on how many voted, not the population.
Well, it was 53% in every single district, it wasn't just 53% overall, so, a ballot guess. But philosophically, I just feel the city's wrong in implementing this after the voters rejected it. I think we should be going back to the voters, just like we are with the sales tax for public safety, we should be going back to the voters, asking their permission to build this facility. You know, I reference a lot of times Prop 200, and I remember when I first got into my government affairs role, Prop 200 was one of the things that everybody always talks about. Prop 200 was in 1996, was a proposition that was put on the ballot by the voters to legalize medical marijuana. The voters overwhelmingly approved it, the Arizona State Legislature decided that, the voters didn't really mean to approve that, and so they repealed it. The voters turned around the following year and came out with Prop 300. Prop 300 put the initiative reform that's in place today, that makes it almost impossible to reverse a voter-approved referendum. What we're doing to the voters of Mesa is an end around. We are telling the Mesa voters that we know what's better than them, that we don't think they really meant to say no, and so we're going to go ahead and do this anyway. So I just want to make sure I get that out there, and with that, I'm done, I know this is probably going to move forward, my colleagues are okay with this, but my, the constituents, my constituents in District 6 have time and time again told me no, and that's where I'm at.
Any additional comments? All right, well, Mr. Brady, when we had a very long, detailed discussion of this a week or two ago, when we went through all the economic projections as to what the revenue would be, and I'm not going to rehash that now, but I turned to you and I said, "Okay, we've got that side of the equation, what's it going to cost us?" And you said, "Stay tuned, next Thursday, we'll answer that question." I think the answer was provided, $63.5 million is the answer to that question.
That's for the academic building, that's correct.
That's for the academic building. So I know the exact annual debt service on that amount is contingent on what the actual sale price of the bonds are, but can you give us an educated guess as to what the debt service would be?
Right, based on the 63, and most likely, we will find, there'll be some elements of that that we'll be able to pay, I don't know if we'll need to finance the whole 63 million, 63 and a half million, there may be some other opportunities to fund that with some cash. So if we were issuing around $60 million a year, $60 million for this project, the debt service payment on that is probably close to $5 million, I think is what we're talking about now, so that's where, we're doing everything we can to try to bring the actual financing costs down, and then obviously, we'd look for opportunities to pay that off as early as possible. So that's on a 20-year term, so right now, five-plus million dollars is probably what we're looking at, but we're going to look for every opportunity between now and then to reduce that principal amount, so we don't have to finance the full amount.
I have a question. $5 million on 63 million for a 20-year?
I said, what I'm saying is, we're looking for every opportunity to reduce the 60, not, we're not, the possibility of not financing the whole 63 million. So if we don't have, if we can find, so we sold, we have $2 million that we received from the sale of the land where the parking garage is, that we have available. We're looking for other funds to be able to reduce the principal amount, and so I'm making an assumption of about $60 million, more or less, that we might, we would actually have to finance with debt. I mean, just like anybody else, we want to put as much down payment as possible, so we're not having to pay debt on it. If we can get it down to $60 million of financing, then I think we're more or less around about a $5 million a year debt service payment. I think I'm pretty close, it's probably plus or minus that, just a little bit.
So $5 million a year for how many years?
20 years is the assumption.
So a total cost, principal and interest of $100 million roughly for the project?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I'll save my stump speech that everyone's heard a million times till Monday, when we vote on this, but counsel, any other questions? All right, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is item three, that's, I haven't missed anything, have I? I think we got through everything. Item three, acknowledged receipt of minutes and various boards. Thank you, Mr. Luna and Mr. Thompson, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item four is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Counsel, anything you'd like to share with us? I do have an announcement that I'd like to share, and it's really just an acknowledgement. There's a, we lost a great individual in our community last week, a woman named Bev Tittlebaker. That's a name that's familiar to many of us. I got to know Bev 20 some-odd years ago, when I was on our council for the first time. This is a wonderful woman that moved to Mesa into a struggling neighborhood, and as a retiree, and rather than watch television or knit or something, she looked out her front door and saw that she lived in a neighborhood that needed a lot of help. And she acquired the empty lot next to her, she built a community center, and countless lives have been blessed as a result of that. So I just wanted, she deserves a shout-out. I believe the services have not yet been planned, they will be probably the sixth or, about the 7th or 8th of April.
The 9th.
I'm sorry.
Neither June.
The 9th, do we know where?
We're working on that.
9th, we don't know where, but we'll make sure that the people know, so that we can give Bev the send-off that she deserves. But what, she's a great example for all of us to learn from. Counsel, other meetings or conferences or announcements? Mr. Brady, can you help us with the schedule?
Yeah, if you don't mind, all the way back at the beginning of this meeting, we were going through the council agenda, and we forgot to bring to the council's attention, there's a special council meeting, this part of the council meeting on Monday, and that's a special council meeting, which is the approval of the budget, so we just want to make sure we don't want to forget that. So that's on the, it just, it just, agendaizes a special council meeting as required to, but just to bring that to your attention, it's a little important there. And then, a couple of things, on June 4th preceding the council meeting, there'll be an audit and finance committee meeting at 4:15, and then, of course, we'll have the study session and council meeting. Also, counsel, on your schedule, we had mentioned in previous city manager updates about the need to do interviews for city magistrates, so at this time, we would like to start setting up those interviews with those individuals, those candidates, and so we're anticipating doing that on June 21st, study session, so.
So that'll be part of an executive session on the 21st.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable with us moving forward, because we need to call them and set up those interviews, so we're going to do that today, but I just want to put that date out there first. You should have all the backup material on the, for each of the candidates, okay? All right.
The only question that comes to mind is exactly what date we're going to settle on for this final meeting about the bond situation. If it is the 21st, that might be kind of a crowded, you can see, I know there's a lot to do, and we just got.
Right. Well, Mayor, we're going to meet, we're going to come back to the council, I think we, probably around the 14th, I think, the week before this, right? And then, and then we can decide when we want to take final action to call the election, but I think we're, we're going to work towards the June 14th date, study session, I think everybody's here on that date, so.
All right. Thank you. Counsel, anything else? If not, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Ready, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.